All right, so we're here with our candidate forum for the Bermuda District. We have Will Aries and Ann Crowley Coker. Is that what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're gonna start with, we have just some questions that are sort of generic to the whole Chesterfield County School District, and then hopefully you guys will have some questions that may be more specific to your district or your schools, and you guys can feel free to jump in. It'll be informal, so it's kind of our plan. All right. So, some of this first question may be a repeat a little bit of what you guys just did for your intros, but for everyone else that didn't get to see it. Will, I'll have you go first. But what made you decide to run for school board? And what are the qualifications and skills you would bring to the role?
Sure. So, I grew up in the district, attended Curtis Elementary, Chester Middle, Elizabeth Davis Middle, and Thomas Dale High School. It wasn't until my senior year that it was brought to my attention, or it was talked about that I may have had a learning disability. So, with further analysis and testing, we realized that I did indeed have a learning disability. And so, I was scared, but also a little relieved that we figured out, you know, why some subjects were more difficult for me. And so, I go in ready to learn what the next steps are. And I'm told, "I'm so sorry, you're about to graduate, there's nothing more we can do." And my heart broke, but in a way I knew that that was correct. You know, I was about to graduate, going into the real world. But as I got older, and I have four younger siblings, I realized how easy it is to be overlooked in such a large school district, and how unfair that is to so many kids. Whether it be because, you know, mom and dad work two or three jobs, or they're in a single-parent household, or staying with grandma, or whatever. It is unfair that there are kids that fall through the cracks, which is why I ultimately decided to run and started attending school board meetings several years ago. I believe that I'm qualified because not only have I been paying attention, but I've been actively learning and asking questions. As far as my tactical skills, when I sat on the board for the YMCA, I learned so much more than just balancing a budget and maintaining a facility, keeping up with maintenance plans. I also learned what it was like to listen to a large community with needs who wanted to get to the same common goal. And through that, having worked with so many amazing professionals, I feel like it put me so far ahead and really gave me insight as to what it would take to be a school board member. And so, I took that first leap about a year ago and announced that I was running and hit the ground running then. Thank you.
All right. So, Ann, same question. What made you decide to run for school board? And what are the qualifications and skills you would bring to the role?
So, I started this process in thinking about running for the school board about a year ago as well. I'm from the Bermuda District. I grew up in the Enon area. I went to Enon Elementary, Chester Middle, and graduated Thomas Dale in 1993. I've got four kids, and that right there is my main reason for wanting to run for the school board. I understand a parent's perspective and understanding how important it is that we are good communicators from the school board level to the community. Getting community involvement through forums or town hall meetings is critical. Making sure that we are communicating and informing our residents of why we are making decisions that we are making on the school board level. I have over 20 years of experience in the accounting field, so budgets are my best friend. I enjoy and understand how managing a budget, staying within budget, and being accountable for that budget, how important that that is. I also make policies and procedures and help write that for my company, which is something that I know is a part of the school board's responsibilities. I've been involved with the PTO at Enon, and I've helped foster children's growth through that, as well as working with teachers and administrators and working with the parents and making sure that we have good events and fun activities for the kids. I am a very analytical thinker. I do not rush to any decision, so this process has been a long process to make sure that this was the right decision for me and for my family. And after all the boxes were checked, yes, here I am. And I look forward to being this representative for the Bermuda District. I have a strong voice, I'm a good listener, so I look forward to where this takes me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, Ann, first question for you on this one. So, CCPS has continued to struggle with transportation issues again this year. If elected to the school board, what specifically would you do to address these ongoing issues?
And I can relate to this 110%. So, yes, again, as a mom and sending my kids out to the bus stop at 6:30 in the morning and wondering, is the bus going to show up? And standing at the window and watching and saying, "Okay, it's really cold outside. Am I gonna have to go now, get my other children up early so I can get in the car and take my son to middle school or not?" I understand this issue. This is a big concern. I want to know what the root cause is. I think there's a lot of factors that are playing into this transportation issue, and I want to get to the root cause of what that is. I think it would be beneficial if we had an outside audit come in and kind of take a look under the hood, if you will, to see, is it routes? Is it, you know, shortage of bus drivers? You know, look at the wages and the competitive wages that we are paying our bus drivers. I think all three, I think we're gonna find all threes are a piece of the puzzle. And then, what can we do to solve it? Because I don't want to stand out, and I don't want my children standing out in the rain or in the cold waiting to, and not sure if the bus is gonna come pick them up or not. It's not fair, so.
Okay. So, Will, same question for you. We struggle with transportation again. If elected to the school board, what specifically would you do to address these ongoing issues?
You're absolutely right. It is, I think it's a terribly complex situation, and so I'm gonna try and keep this short, because this is something I've been following closely. Man, you can go so many ways. For starters, it comes with looking at our district, in each individual district. Bermuda being the southernmost part of the county with no center-based gifted program, for instance. We are busing students who are in CBG to a whole other part of the district. That requires more buses, it requires more staff. That's support staff for kids with special needs, that's bus drivers. So, now we're talking about pay, maintenance on buses, et cetera, et cetera. We need to start looking at what services we can provide in each district to keep kids as close to home, to make it more accessible for those inevitable situations where the bus doesn't show and mom does have to drive. It certainly happened to me when I was in school. I was on the other side of the district, and so driving, my mom driving me to Elizabeth Davis, you know, during rush hour traffic, was a 30-minute bus drive. And so, we need to look at it as a district perspective, as well as a county line perspective. We are leasing buses, which is inherently, is not inherently bad, but when we talk about housing, or educating over 60,000 students and transporting them safely to and from school, we need to make sure we're doing some equipment that is maintained, that we own, that we are responsible for. It brings a sense of urgency and responsibility when we own the equipment. The way we treat our bus drivers is not the way we express our love for them when they bring our kids home safely. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're not paying them competitive wages. And we put them in a weird position, because we allow new bus drivers to come in, and we get them their certification, and then we allow them to leave with no contract after that certification to other school districts, offering a higher pay. So, we give you a free certification to be a bus driver, and then we let you go to Prince George for $2 more an hour, while, you know, we're paying you just enough to be under the poverty line. The bus crisis, I mean, it goes so much deeper. And I don't think I have time to dive in anymore, but it's an incredibly complex issue that we need to be talking to everyone in the community about, because it doesn't just affect families and students on those buses, it affects everyone. It's taxpayer money as well.
All right. All right. So, Will, first answer for you. So, Chesterfield County has the lowest funding per pupil of any medium-to-large-size school district in Virginia. Do you believe our current funding levels are adequate? Why or why not?
Put me on the spot. I don't. Quite frankly, I don't think that we are investing enough. In Virginia, we spend 30, just over $32,000 a year per person incarcerated. We spend just under $11,000 per pupil in Chesterfield County. So, we spend three times as much on incarceration than we do on education, and we know that education directly impacts incarceration rates. If we provide a healthy education, we are not only setting students up for success, we're also giving back to the community in many ways. We're stabilizing the economy and promoting growth. We're filling jobs so unemployment goes down. We are, we're setting people up for success, we're also setting our community up for success. We all know that the more that you invest in your schools, the higher your property values are, the more likely people are to move to your area, the more willing your local government and higher-up government are willing to give you money for roads, malls, shopping centers, whatever. It's, I think education is such a crucial piece to a healthy community, because, again, it's not just something that affects those learning, but everybody who's involved and lives around. Thank you.
Same question for you. So, do you believe our current funding levels are adequate? Why or why not?
I do think that funding is always a source of area that we can improve on. I would like, as my background kind of says, is I would like to understand where our funding's being spent. So, analyzing what our funding is now and where do we need to make sure we're taking care of the needs that our community has and our schools have, and then seeing where we can save money and then maybe take care of some of the wants that we have in our school system. I definitely agree that, camera just came in here, that our schools are a direct reflection of what our community provides. So, people do come to Chesterfield County because our schools are so amazing, and that, you know, the more we can put into our schools, the better they can be, whether that's through maintenance and capital improvements, teacher salaries, things of that nature. But first, I would like to know, you know, better understand how the funding is currently allocated and make sure we're spending that appropriately.
Okay. So, a quick follow-up, and I guess, Will, this might be a little bit more for you, since you were more of a hard no, I don't think the funding's right. If the funding is not adequate, what specifically would you propose to increase funding? Where would you look to increase funding?
Put me on the spot again. I think Chesterfield is in a unique place, and I know this is a controversial topic. We, as large the locality as we are, we're also surrounded by many other localities who come to us for a number of things: shopping, food, experiences, et cetera, et cetera. I think a meals tax, as low as the board will provide, would be beneficial without a doubt. We look at Richmond City or other localities that are providing meals tax, and they're showing that a large majority is coming from other areas. And Richmond City, being as large as it is, Chesterfield's relatively the same size when you think about the fact that we're surrounded by Powhatan, Amelia, Colonial Heights, Petersburg, et cetera, et cetera. We have so many localities that are not as developed, they're not as populated, and so they come to us for food, they come for shopping, for experiences, et cetera, et cetera. I think that a meals tax is, you know, when you talk about something that is pennies on a whole check, but brings in millions of dollars a year, and especially for something as important as education, I really think that it's worth it in the end.
Any follow-up for you, or comment on the meals tax, or just the funding piece of it?
Regarding, since you brought up the meals tax, I think that, one, we need to listen to what the residents and what the community is looking for. So, if the community is behind a meals tax, then I would support a meals tax, as long as it's also earmarked for something specific. So, if we know that that meals tax is going to go towards capital improvement and maintenance, and that we also prove that that is where the money is being spent, then absolutely I would support it, as long as the residents of Chesterfield County also agree.
So, you would support putting that on the ballot, then? Or at least giving the voters a chance to?
Giving the voters a chance to vote on it, yes.
All right. So, Ann, first question for you here. So, CP, sort of unrelated vein. CCPS currently has $50 million plus in critical maintenance needs and many more millions in deferred work to its buildings. Some of these deferrals have resulted in serious issues such as Legionella being found in the schools. What would be your plan to address this backlog, and where would funding come to finance the repairs?
Yes, the maintenance issue. Again, it kind of leads back to what I commented on a minute ago. Making sure that we know how much we have allocated for maintenance and we're spending it appropriately. I think there should be a maintenance checkoff list, so we know exactly what each school is required, just from a year's maintenance, what does that look like? And make sure that we are satisfying those maintenance needs and make sure that the funding is there and we are spending that funding appropriately. Again, you want the accountability to be there from the school board's perspective. If the school board is responsible for taking care of the maintenance for the schools, then we should be held accountable for that, and we should be able to answer back to the residents, you know, what we did and how we spent the maintenance money, and back to the board supervisors as well.
Well, your thoughts about getting caught up on the maintenance?
So, tangentially, I'm gonna tie this in, I promise. So, my platform is the ABCs. It's access, buildings and infrastructure, and communication. And I wholeheartedly believe that communication ties into everything that a school board member does. Or, an elected official period. Press release went out earlier today. The county board of supervisors knew that Legionella was in the water tower, in one of the water towers since August 6th of 2019, and has not told anybody. It was FOIA requested and released today. I think when it comes to maintenance specifically, well, generally, everything, but maintenance specifically, the most disservice we can provide is by not communicating early and effectively, with all the facts that we have when we have them. I think that there's not a question in my mind, there's not a doubt in my mind that we have maintenance issues. The bond referendum, for the last two bond referendums, from moving back as far as eight years ago, have put Bermuda schools, two of the three lowest-rated schools for quality were in the Bermuda District. We've been told now for eight years that we need to continue to do maintenance, and it's not happening. And every year, we get a new report that says, "Oh, it's gonna cost an extra $10 million because the HVAC just went," or, you know, "Thomas Dale is covering up asbestos," or this, that, and the other. There are issues that have still not been addressed. I think as far as funding, it really, I agree with Ann 110% that we need to take a serious look at how we're managing a nearly $700 million budget. Maintenance is one of the few things that you can have an excuse on about funding. There's no reason why we move to out of, why we want to, instead of doing in-house maintenance, we move to private companies. It's harder to, sorry. It's harder to hold a separate company accountable, for instance. When we have three private companies coming in, looking at our schools from three different ways, as we saw several months ago, we had one company that was falling super behind and actually to catch up just before school started. We had one that was almost there, and then we had one that was right where it was supposed to be. And we don't save any money when we do this, because we put students at risk. And then we're in a reactive situation, dealing with Legionnaires' disease or what have you. HVAC going out. I just drove by Thomas Dale a couple weeks ago, and there was a building on fire in the back. Like, there's absolutely no reason why we're not putting money into maintenance and making sure that protocols are in place.
All right. So, Will, first question for you. So, several school districts around the county, or around the country, have chosen to arm teachers and/or administration in response to school gun violence. Do you agree with arming teachers and/or administrators? Yes or no, and why?
This is an incredibly complex issue. I think a number of things have to come into account here. First and foremost, there need to be conversations with your local police department. When these conversations were opened up with chief cats and our local police department, the very first thing that we were confronted with was, we are short 50 police officers. Chesterfield County was down at the time this conversation started, 50 police officers, for routine, for their police department period. So, then we talk about 65 schools that are, yes, 65 schools that need an additional SRO, because most SROs are, or mentor retired police officer, what have you, in this position, are being pulled away from the police force at all times of the day for every single school. And I believe the proposal initially was elementary through high school. And it was stated on record by our police chief that he believes mental health is the very first step. We should be looking at mental health services when it comes to violence in schools. First and foremost. And that is a quote from him. I think that there are a number of other protocols that we need to first exhaust. Making sure that our plans with our local police department, fire department, EMS are there, that we're on the same page, that we're all communicating effectively, is extremely important. Making sure that the protocols that our schools are following, making sure our doors are locked, security cameras are where they're supposed to be at one and all times. There's adequate staff designated for those reasons. Having gone to Thomas Dale, we used to joke that the seven minutes that we had to get between classes was no joke, because I'd have class in the auditorium at the very end of the school, and then I'd go to chemistry at literally the opposite end, and I'd be running. And so, it's hard enough to say one SRO or one mentor is enough. And then to add in a school like Thomas Dale with 2,200 students, it makes the situation way more complex than just hiring those teachers, or those mentors, excuse me. I also, I think that we need to look at all sides of this scenario, because when we arm personnel in a school district, the school district also assumes liability and insurance for those individuals. So, God forbid a bullet misfires, or something happens, a student gets a hold of that gun, that millions-of-dollar suit is now on the back of a school or a school system. That is on the insurance that we will have to carry. And then even just the salaries. Bringing a retired police officer out of, or bringing a retired police officer out of retirement to be a mentor. The proposal for Chesterfield County just last year was like $67,000 as a retired part-time mentor, which, if I can be frank, is crazy, considering we don't pay our starting teachers that, and they're providing the education. I think that there are a number of ways that we can provide safety in our schools effectively, but it takes a lot more than just throwing out ideas. We need to have open conversation with a lot more than just our parents, but our resources in the community and professionals who have studied this topic for way longer than we've been talking about it.
All right. I'm gonna push you on a little bit. So, are you a proponent of arming teachers or administrators?
No.
Okay.
I'm not. I think that there are other options we should exhaust first. On all of my stances, I am malleable. If constituents in an outcry say they want something else, or we've exhausted everything, and we get to a point years down the line, or sometime down the line, it's something that can be revisited. But from my conversations in the community currently, it doesn't sound like that's an accurate representation of my district.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were clear.
Sure.
So, same question for you. Would you agree with arming teachers and/or administrators?
I'm gonna say I'm a hard no. I do not think that we should arm our teachers, our administrators. Teachers went into teaching to teach. They did not go into teaching to hold a weapon or be responsible for the safety. They're responsible for the safety of the students, but not in the means of having a gun in their possession. I have many friends who are teachers, and they have told me time and time again that it scares them. They don't want to have that responsibility, and it's, again, not why they went into teaching. They went into teaching to teach. I think we need to look at other safety measures, such as having law enforcement retired or otherwise in our schools to help keep our children safe. The double-locking doors that most of the schools are, have or are implementing in now, so you have two ways of, you know, double-locking in order to get into and access to the school. I know with Enon, with the building of the new school, there is a three-second alarm. So, if a door stays open longer than three seconds, it alarms. And there are buttons within the office where the administrators can reach the police and dispatch 911 in a split second. So, we need to look at taking care of those type of measures in the other schools that may not have that before we go putting guns and weapons in our administrators' and teachers' hands.
All right. So, Ann, first question for you. Do you support using taxpayer dollars to fund private or charter schools in Chesterfield County? Why or why not?
I do not support charter funding for charter schools. I think that we need to keep the funding within our current school system and keeping it the public school system and not having it earmarked for certain charter-type schools or private institutions.
Will, same question for you.
I agree. That money was sent to public school system, it should stay in the public school system. I think that it's a, we have a great opportunity to show that you can get an amazing education in Virginia, no matter where you send your student. And I think that public schools, the public school system is doing amazing and needs that funding to continue to do great things.
Right. Everyone agrees that one's right? All right. This is the last sort of scripted question I have. Hopefully, we have some other questions. But what should, Will, let's go first. What should the relationship look like between the school board and the board of supervisors? What would you do to create a productive, positive dialogue between the two boards?
I think open communication, going back to my platform, ABCs, communication is a big reason why I decided to run. Having an open conversation, open dialogue with the board supervisors is incredibly important. We work hand-in-hand, and so we should be doing so in a way that is beneficial to both. I'm aware that we can't ask for $10 billion to fund Chesterfield County school systems, although it'd be nice. So, there has to be give and take, but that relationship needs to be, it not only needs to be well-maintained, but good expectations should be set for a future board. Those relationships should not be something where the school board is hearing about an incident after the fact, or we're told we're getting money, and then last minute we're not, because that has happened many times in the past. I hope to have a great relationship with the board supervisor, whoever they may be in that election. But I think that is incredibly critical to the well-being of the school system and the county.
Ann, same question for you.
Um, I do agree, communication is key. Um, I see this every day, um, in my profession. You, lack of communications, you do not succeed, um, with your implementation of your plan or whatever it is that you're seeking. It also provides transparency. We need to be transparent between the school board and the board of supervisors. We do work hand in hand, it is a, a team environment. Um, and I, I know how important that is and I do that, like I said, on a daily basis in, in my own organization that I work for. And so I, I think that we have to continue that and I will work well with the, with whoever is elected as the board of supervisors as well and, and make sure that we collectively work together as a team.
Great. I guess I'll open it up for whatever questions you guys might have.
I have one, um, sorry, it was cold.
Ah, it's a, it's a.
Um, one of the things that, um, I'm struggling with this year, I have four kids at two different schools, one in the middle school, one in the elementary school, um, at the start times. And I was on the start time committee last year after the, the change was made to investigate ways that we could possibly make it better because middle school going first and two hours later, the elementary school is just not working for families. Um, is that something that you all hope to be able to investigate when you, it, when you get on the school board? Because, um, I feel like we've spent the year analyzing it and then we came up with, you know, some ideas, but it's kind of built flat, nothing else has happened.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yes, I've had similar conversations with parents and concerns with the, the start of the school times. Um, I do think we need to continue to do some data gathering. Uh, we have only had it in place for a year. So I think it's, it's, you know, we need to continue to collect this information and then analyze and see if, are we getting the benefit that we went for when, when we decided, or the decision was made to change the start times? Are we getting what we were, we were looking for? Um, and if not, then we need to look at, at changing that. But I do think at this time, we're still in that data gathering stage. Um, and then we need to, um, analyze those results and then move forward, um, in the next, in the coming years.
So I had a conversation with a, a sitting board member about start times. Um, because I was hearing so many people saying, we love it. And I've seen so many people hear, heard them saying, we hate it. And I, I was in between in this weird like, what do we do? Um, and if I understand the conversation correctly, um, there were three plans in place and, um, our hands were kind of tied because of funding. Um, and so we kind of, we went with a change. And we're, I think you're right, we're in this, this, uh, data collection cycle where we're trying to figure out if this was the right change. Um, I think, um, I think going back to communication, I didn't know that until well after the, the change was made. And I was at a lot of those committee meetings in the beginning and in those school board meetings and, um, hearing it even then, both sides. Uh, having, um, younger siblings still in school, um, my parents haven't seemed to complain too much about it, but I know my mom's not a fan. Um, and I think the, the, the option they wanted to go with, which, which is what I think my mom suggested, um, was elementary first and then middle and then high school. Um, and so I, I would love to see, and I think that's what studies are, um, saying is best. Um, so I think fortunately, this may be a situation where, um, we had a board who wanted to implement change and wanted to do something good, uh, potentially, um, but maybe for more reasons than to benefit the kids. Um, and so, um, as hopefully a school board member, I, I, I don't wanna put plans on, on, in, in place or on the table that are only gonna halfway get us there. Um, and so the school start times change has been a, a very interesting one because, um, usually the question is, um, do you, will you change it? And, um, like, we're not there yet. Um, but if there is room to change it for the better, absolutely. Um, and I think that's why those committees are so important. Um, especially, I'm, I'm glad you're sitting on it now, keeping, keeping it going because, um, people tend to lose interest after some time. Especially after change is made and they feel like they, their voices weren't heard. So, thank you for saying.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I was supposed to be gone by now, but I do, I do have a question and this is, this is an if you win question. Um, so whoever would like to go first. Um, the Chesterfield Education Association has, uh, just, uh, quietly unveiled a, um, an organizing campaign whereby we will be advocating for all employees, not just within the school division, but in the entire county, to push for a five percent increase in pay. So, our first responders, the women who collect our taxes and the, and the admin building, anyone and everyone that gets paid in part or whole by either Chesterfield County itself or CCPS. If you win, uh, would you be in favor of adding that to the base budget that you will be seeing, um, as soon as you step foot through the door and, and, and take office?
Can I, can I take it?
Go ahead.
Um, not only would I be in favor of that, I would make sure that they commonly raises are met with increased healthcare, healthcare costs or, uh, classroom needs or, or what have you. Um, I, I would, this is something I would absolutely love to see countywide and I would make sure it's not being met with opposition from, from any other portion of their paycheck.
And I too, I'm a proponent of increasing teacher salary. I don't want, I'm still trying to understand why we are not at the national average for teachers' pay. Um, so I do support any initiative that can get us there. I do think that maybe we need to look at some stepping stones to get us there, um, over the course of the next few years. I am a very much of a proponent of, um, increased pay for all of our county, um, administrators. My husband is a firefighter, so I understand public, uh, service and, and, and from that aspect as well. Um, he's not with Chesterfield County, but he's with, um, Prince George County. So, um, I do understand, um, you know, that how important their jobs are and teachers are right there with them. So yes, I, I would support and put forth, um, any effort that I can and be a voice to increase teachers' pay.
Go ahead. So my follow-up question is, and, and Ann, this goes into, in part, what you said about the, um, uh, the, the question about us not being at the national average. So, um, a part of the advocacy that we do is also on the state level with our legislators, both in the House and Senate. How comfortable are you with continuing the advocacy for the school division on the state level, speaking with those who will be winning, whoever they will be, okay, come, you know, come November, um, to, to, to push for what it is that, that, uh, that we need on the county level? Because ultimately, the local government cannot fund.
Right.
Everything and the state.
We need the state.
Needs to pony up, so what say you?
Um, I, yes, I will stand, uh, with whoever's in, whoever gets elected at the state level, um, pushing for, um, increasing our national, or getting us to the national average for teachers' pay, yes.
I've been, um, lobbying in the general assembly for several years now and for, uh, for inti- uh, increased, um, funding for education, among a dozen other things that are super important to me. Um, but, uh, yeah, our, our state senators and delegates are familiar with my face because I'm in their offices quite frequently. Um, I think, um, it's not even just education that needs some funding. There's, there's a lot of things, but, uh, keeping those conversations open. Um, and, and contacting them frequently is, is extremely important.
Well, you were all welcome to join us. In January, we go to PTA Day at the general assembly, um, on the day they do the Red for Red merch. And we go and.
Together, yeah.
My then-third grader came with us and met all of our elected officials. So you can bring your kids and it's an excused absence from school.
It is.
For, for, so. Come and bring yours kids and let them see your government at work. Any other questions?
Um, can you guys share any experience that you have in other areas of the county? Since if you're elected to school, you'll be expected to work with them. Um, personal experience, schools, kids?
Uh, just our experience working with like school, the schools and.
Like, for example, like, we, I live in Bermuda, my kids went to Bermuda Elementary School, Matogah Middle School and High School, but my son goes to a specialty center in Dale.
Gotcha.
So, I see a little bit of everything.
Um, crossing over between the districts, yeah. Um, you know, I've, my, um, experience with my children has been primarily right now just in the Bermuda district. But I do know, you know, when my, uh, other children come along, they might want to go to a specialty center up here in Lothian. Or, um, so I'm, I'm open and I work well across the board, uh, as far as working with others in, in other districts. I will be involved in all the schools within the Bermuda district. Uh, my face will be seen and my name will be known, um, if I get elected, um, as the school board representative. I think face-to-face interaction is important. Um, I know from my, uh, experience as a PTO president for several years and vice president that, um, being, having a face there and, um, interacting with the teachers, it gives them that sense of buy-in, that they, you know, their opinions matter and that they want to, um, share with you and they're more open with you. So, I, I do, uh, plan, excuse me, plan to make sure that I am, um, talking with, whether it's the other school board representatives about other districts or even within my own district. And I'm making sure that my, my face is there and they feel comfortable coming to me.
So, I grew up, uh, in the Bermuda district, um, but ultimately ended up all around. Um, I'm closer to the Dale District line, I live walking distance from Thomas Dale. Um, so the Dale District is up right there. Um, my parents are both self-employed, um, and own both of their own businesses and have in the community for the last fif- fifteen, seventeen years or so. Um, my mom owns a cleaning business, my dad owns a window tiding business. Um, and so being small business owners, um, I know also a lot of the other small business owners, um, throughout, um, this part, the southern part of Chesterfield County. Um, being a specialty center student at Thomas Dale, um, I have friends from all over the place. Um, and the majority of my family lives all down in the Bermuda area. Um, and so I, I'm constantly kind of all over and, and, um, doing different things. Um, I partnered with the Chester YMCA for a really long time, um, and did work with them. Um, I'm a millennial, so I've had a million jobs at various places and worked at probably half of them in Chester. Um, and so, uh, Chester is a, it's funny because it's getting so much bigger, um, but it's still kind of a small town, it feels like. Um, and so, uh, I don't know, I feel like I know, I feel like I know everybody, but that's not true.
Have either of you served on the school board committees? Magic committees or?
I've applied, but there, there are often, um, you know, tons of applicants. And so I have not been chosen, um, but that's, um, yeah, I'm not.
Same. I'm not actually sat on, on the committee, but I have attended school board meetings and had conversations with others that have been in, in board committees or are current school board members as well.
I went to many subcommittee meetings, um, all over the county for, um, there was one on SROs and on mentors, um, special education, CBG, um, the school start times, transportation. Um, I bound, I, I bounced around, um, and, and sat in a many of them, maybe talked, uh, when, when, when not asked, but, um, yeah, I try and stay aware if I can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just have one more. Um, a lot of, uh, Chesterfield County's growing, um, and it seems to me like every other second, a new development is getting approved to be built without any, um, uh, any thought about how it's gonna impact our schools. In fact, there's one on two eighty-eight that they're plant, two eighty-eight route ten that they're planning on building right next to Gates. And it's a hu- uh, it seems to be a huge development and, you know, with schools overcrowding, you know, all the ones over in the, the Halsley area and Old, Old Hundred, that school's already gonna be overcrowded and yet we continue to build. What are your thoughts on how to work with board of supervisors, um, to make sure that when they improve these, these new developments, that they're taking into consideration our school population?
I've, um, I've had these types of conversations with our current, um, board of supervisors, Dorothy Jankel, and, um, you know, i- it is an important, um, piece between the school board and the board of supervisors that we stay engaged and we understand and we can have that conversation so that we know, okay, well, how large is this community? How many single-family homes or is it A fifty-five and above type complex? What, what is being developed so that we can, um, make sure we know the impact to the schools ahead of time and be proactive instead of reactive?
Yeah, um, it's funny you brought this up, I almost said something earlier. I think, um, development period, whether it be, um, neighborhoods, shopping centers, or even other schools, um, it, it's gotten to the school board and have been such a reactionary, um, situation. Um, we end up with reactionary redistricting or finding out after, you know, the ground has been broken. Um, and not only is it a shock and it takes time to, for the community to really understand what's going on, um, but it also commonly disrupts, um, the way the budget works, um, as far as how schools are being run and if they're getting close to capacity, what they have to do, um, if the county is then providing trailers, which should never be, uh, uh, the case. Um, and so, uh, going back to having a really good relationship with board supervisors, I think is crucial. But, um, even with developments of school, with new schools, um, going, tying that into the safety portion, um, making sure that our, our new schools are strategically placed near, um, resources in the county like police stations, Thomas Dale's less than a half mile from the police station, um, and the fire department. Making sure that we're not isolating schools out away from, uh, things that will keep them safe as well. Um, so I think developments are a big issue and need to be looked at from all facets. And currently, they're just being looked at as a, um, halfway bring money to the county. But we also need, need to make sure we're sustaining the county and the communities that are serving.
Well, thank you guys so much for giving us your time. Um, we will work to get this posted. Um, we'll, we'll send you guys the link, you can share it through whatever, you know, mediums, through, you know, your circle of people. But thank you so much for coming out today, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.